Ask anyone that has a cellphone or a mobile device, please to silence it. If you need to take a call, please exit the room and take a call out in the hallway. Should there be an emergency during the meeting, please exit this room, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. Secondary exit is to the left, and then a right, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in case of emergency. I'd like to report out to the public that the council has met at 5:00 PM this evening in closed session to discuss a personnel matter. At this time, I would invite Pastor David Hudson of Livingstone's Church to please lead us in the vacation.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for allowing us the opportunity to gather here this evening, Father, to make decisions that benefit the community around here. And pray your blessing on this city, upon the people that are in it. Pray your blessing of wisdom, Father, upon those who are making decisions this evening for the common good of this county and this city. Lord, may -- there's a lot of history here, and a lot of history being made in the past. And we ask you for wisdom, Father, because without your wisdom, we will not get to where you want us to be. So may your blessings be upon this place, and wisdom radiate upon us. We just thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for each person here. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Stand and join me as I pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to invite Rosa Rodriguez and Aces Manager Fritz Judy, representing the Telamon Housing and Financial Literacy, for a presentation to us tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight, and to share a little bit about what we do at Telamon. We are really excited with all the programs, so we're going to try to be brief in a brief 10 minutes to give you an overview of what we do at Telamon. This is -- my name is Rosa Rodriguez, as I mentioned, and this is my coworker colleague, Fritz Judy.
Good evening, everyone. At Telamon Corporation, we strongly believe when we empower individuals, going to improve our communities. And to do that, we offer better education to the community, and when we offer better education, it's going to have an effect. We're going to have a better job. The better job is going to give a better life, and the better life is going to have a better communities. It's like a circle, and so that's the way we think in Telamon Corporation. That's your belief, that you're going to see in our purpose, empower individuals, improve communities. And our mission at Telamon Corporation, we want to advocate for the people in need. And we've been doing that for 50 years in 11 states, and we want to promote the development of human potential by providing resources and creating opportunities in the community we serve, specifically on the eastern shore, because right now, we are operating on Delaware and Maryland. And like I said, we offer service since 50 years on 11 states, and you can have an idea about all the states, Alabama, Delaware, and all the states we offer. But on the eastern shore, we offer service on Virginia, Delaware, and Maryland.
The service, all the service that we provide, we provide in three different languages, actually four. We do the services in English, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and also French. Yes, and helping the community, empowering individuals, and improving community. We do that throughout a numbers of services that we provide. First, we have the National Farm Worker Job Program, and that is for farmworkers who come to the area. You know that in the summertime, when we are doing the cropping, the tomato during the season, tomato season, watermelon season, a lot of the farmworkers come to the area, and some of them decide to stay in the area, they want to settle down. So in order to settle down and helping them to become self-sufficient and part of this community, we provide employment and training services. We provide classes in English. We provide them the FAST program, which is a food and FAST service program. Right now, at the One Stop, that's where we are located, we have a kitchen where we provide the training, hands-on, right there. We do the classes in the morning, and then in the afternoon, they go in the kitchen, and they learn how to cook. We get them ready so that when they go out, they are, they have an occupational job. They can get a job and stay in the community. For, also for youth program, we serve all the youth for what coming called Somerset and Worcester from ages 16 to 24. And that is for youth that are dropped out of school, youth that they finished high school, and they don't know what to do. And so we help them go to college. We do an assessment. We see if they need computer skill, any skill that they need, we work with them one-on-one. And then we have our housing department, and Fritz is going to talk about housing in a little bit. But besides the housing, we have community program. Under our community program, we have a food pantry, which is open till Tuesday all day from 9:00 to 4:00, and anybody can come to the One Stop at Telamon and get some food for them and their family. We have the health and safety program, and in the health and safety program, we go out and we train people how to protect themselves from pesticide, especially the farmworkers when they come to the area, the work where pesticide have been applied. And so, you know, in order for them to not to get sick, we teach them, how can you protect yourself from pesticide? And we also do the heat stress. In the summertime, you know, when it gets really hot, they're out there working crazy amount of hours, and then they get soused, they can have a heat truck. We go out there to different camps, different places, and train them how to protect themselves from heat as well. And we also have this training called limited exposure around family, and that is for pesticide at home. Many of us might think that we don't have pesticide at home, but we work with blish, don't we? We work with some of these different chemicals when we clean, and sometime we get this, and we get sick, so we go out and teach people how to protect themselves from those chemicals at home. We have a volunteer program that helps people, that it gives the opportunity to people in the community who feel like they want to give back to the community, if they want to come and assist us. Like our food pantry is mainly assisted by volunteers, so we welcome volunteers to help out in any area that I have mentioned. We've been in business for 50 years. Last year, we celebrated our 50th anniversary in Raleigh, North Carolina. As Fritz mentioned before, we are located in 11 states, and our headquarters is in Raleigh, North Carolina. So we've been, we've been around for a couple of years. The youth program, this is one of our youth who's been through our program, and where she have learned how to be ready, how to be attractive to the employer. When they come to our company, if they don't know how to resume, how to conduct an interview, we teach them that. And we teach them soft skill. We get them ready for the workforce here in the community. I talked about, a little bit about the FAST program, that is, that is a 12- to 16-week class. We get people coming every day from Monday to Friday to Telamon. We have an instructor who teaches them in the morning, and she will help them do the self-study certification, and after they do the 16 weeks, they can always come back and get the certified food manager. So we're getting them ready for an occupation here in the community. The workplace readiness, that is for us teaching communication skill. If people come, they don't know computer, we give them some classes on computers. We do help them to problem-solving, thinking, critical thinking skill. We help them with anything that they may need so that they can get a job and be self-sufficient, and also that they can maintain the job. It's not only just helping them find a job, it's how to maintain it after that. So we work with that as well. Right now, we have a program called Rosetta Stone, and that is a program that we have at the, we have a lab there, and people can come and learn English. And they can do that from Monday to Friday. We have orientation twice a month, and anybody who wants to learn English, they can come and guess and learn through the Rosetta Stone. And we also have an instructor, and she will meet with them one-on-one to see, to assess what they need. Talked about the pesticide. This is some of the groups that we're going out to, and we do all the training, like I said, English, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and French. We give them the EPA card, which is the Environmental Protection Agency card. That is good. It was good for five years, now they changing the regulation, and it's every year. So people need to be able to learn how to be protected from pesticide and the heat stress. Talked about, a little bit about limiters, limiting exposure around families. The help, the food pantry, anybody can come and get it to help families meet their nutrition needs. And if you, if you know anybody who wants to volunteer and give back to the community, we welcome you. Please, you know, come to our office. A couple of hours, we can do it. You can be a volunteer from home, you don't have to be in person. There's some things that we can do from home, you can do it from person, you can come and help us out. We welcome the help. Okay? And then Mr. Fritz is going to talk a little bit about house.
Thank you, Rosa. And as you can see, we've been doing a lot, Telamon, we're doing a lot, a lot of thing. And the problem is a lot of people leaving, a lot of residents, they don't know about Telamon. That's why we try to explain to people what we are doing. And I'm going to, just today, I'm going to talk about housing specifically. The housing program we have, remember, when I started, I told you, we think the best way to help people, the community is to try to make a difference, try to improve their life. Because we think if we do, if we do that, they can give back to the community, it's going to have a huge effect on the community. And so that's why we use the housing program. We have to do that, cause a better life to housing, counseling, and financial education. We provide homeownership counseling. We provide also financial literacy. We provide also credit counseling. And Telamon Corporation also is a hard sell, a certified counseling agency. The Telamon Corporation program, we offer the pre-purchase class. The pre-purchase class is, let's say you want to buy a house, and how require you take some class before you buy the house. The pre-purchase class we have, you, we divide it in 10 more, 10 more, 10 more, just some financial literacy. We're going to go, I'm going to show you them. And after that, we have the first, first home town buyer. And after you have the pre-purchase class, it's for the person who already has a house. But that person, you don't, if you have a house, you don't need for every single problem you have to do, I was to call somebody to pay. This class, we invite Home Depot, we invite laws. Is that more about workshop? About if you have like a little minor issue in your, in your house, you can fix it for you, and by yourself, without paying a lot of money. It's a, it's a very, it's a very good class, and a lot of people appreciate this class in the community. And we got also the default counseling, we offer the winter wine. It's more for the people who don't own a house yet, but the people who went house. We teach them about the Maryland law, about Delaware law, their right and their responsibility as a tenant. That's very, very important. And also, we try to resolve also some conflict between the landlord and the tenant. Okay? So this is, and also we have the fair housing class. The fair housing is like, we try to let them know what, it's more about the discrimination. Let's say you have like an issue, and the tenant, and the landlord refuse to, to rent you the place. So there's a lot of place, there's a lot of things you can do to have your, because everybody deserve their own place. Because that's what they call, fair housing is not an option, it's the law. And after that, we have the foreclosure prevention. As you know, we have a lot of people, they, they lost their house, but in eastern shore, we were not like Florida. We were blessed, but we still have a couple of people come to, come to see us, and we help them to see if they can work on the home modification, a couple of things, we help them to do that. So that's a huge program, you can imagine. And like Rosa said, this program, we offer it in English, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and in French. We did update this presentation to add the French. But to do that, the financial literacy, like I said before, we use the FDIC, we call the Money Smart. The Money Smart is the book, we have 10 modules inside the book, and all, and each of these modules took us two hours to teach it. So let's say somebody decide to register for the pre-purchase class. That person is going to come to our class, is going to, is going to have to get the Module 1 to the Module 10. It's 10 by 2, give you 20 hours. And after that, that person is going to have to get the class first time home buyer, another two hours. And after that, we also do the one-on-one counseling with that person. Because regarding, I can't have a workshop, everybody, each of you have your own issue, so I have to sit down with you to see how I can resolve your issue. So the bank, the bank on it, you can imagine, we have a lot of people, they don't have any bank account. We have to go to teach them about bank account, and for this class, we invite some people in the bank, Bank of America, PNC, we invite them to come to talk about, about bank. And also, when we're doing about the mortgage, we invite some people, some lenders, to talk about, to talk. But regarding the law, we can invite one, we have to invite three, like that we give the choice, because we're, we're not here to advocate for a bank, for a specific bank. We have to give the, the choice to our client. So to finish, I think, we believe in Telamon, what we didn't expose financial education give equal to the world to self-sufficiency. Because our job at the end is to get that person to become self-sufficient, because we don't want to carry that person. The first that person can walk to the office, after, after the year, after the program is complete, we want that person to be self-sufficient, that person can go help himself and help the person in the community. Thank you, and I don't know if you have a question, Rosa, if you want to add something else.
Thank you very much. One of the things that might be good for not just the people here, but also the ones at home, you have a, what's your website, so they get in touch with you if they want to volunteer?
Okay, sure. And we are located at the One Stop Job Market right here on Salisbury, across from World Community College. We also have an office in Delaware. But we are pretty mobile. We can come to any place to do the training, not just there.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Thanks for what you do. Okay, I'm, we entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda. We have a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda. Discussion.
We would like to make a motion to remove Resolution 2603, which was authorized to remove you with the Department of Justice Office on violating the amendment from the entire agenda, as this was already approved on February 26, 2016.
Twenty-second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that item is eliminated.
So second motion to remove Resolution 2605 from the consent agenda and move it to immediately after the consent agenda for discussion purposes.
In a second.
We have a motion and a second to move Resolution 2605. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. If we get this right, it'll be a miracle. Make sure I'm doing this right, so I don't mess it up. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We just need to vote on the--
amended legislation set, session.
The amended agenda.
Amended legislative agenda.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended legislation agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the chair votes aye. Okay.
That's one call.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go ahead, second. Here we go.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the February 1st closed session minutes and the work session minutes. February 16th, special meeting minutes and work session minutes. And we have the February 22nd regular meeting minutes and the March 7th regular, or work session minutes, excuse me. We have Resolution Number 2600 approving and adopting the stated objectives of the 20-year envisioned Salisbury Master Plan, that's 2015 to 2035. We have Resolution Number 2601 approving and adopting the stated recommendations of the 2016 Salisbury Zoo Master Plan. Resolution Number 2602 authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for a development known as Riverview Commons, located at 150 West Market Street. Resolution Number 2604 approving the appointment of Charles Ryan Wetzel to the Sustainability Advisory Committee Green Team for the term ending December 2019. Resolution Number 2606 appointing Jeremy Kirkendall to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And we have a manufacturer's exemption request for K&amp;L Microwave for their equipment purchased in 2014. Since the request came within two years of the purchase of the equipment, they're eligible for up to five years exemption, and over the next five years, they'll benefit from the exemption by a total savings of $13,229 in their personal property tax. And this concludes the evening's consent agenda.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as described, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2605.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2605.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Make a motion to, on line four of that same resolution, strike Ethics Commission and replace that with Historic District Commission, to which he is being appointed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend Resolution 2605 as noted. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I will now call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 2605. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's true. Award of bids. We have a motion and a second to approve the award of bids. Ms. Miller?
Right.
Go ahead.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
The first item this evening is change order number one to Contract 110-15. That's the Riverwalk Repairs Phase 2. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to process change order number one in the amount of $260,000, $260,672 for this contract. This contract was awarded to Muir Tech Incorporated in June 2015. If approved, these additional funds will be expended for replacement of the iron railing along the entire Riverwalk, and the removal and replacement of 400 feet of concrete sidewalk. Funds are available in the account noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted above, to Muir Tech Incorporated in the amount of $260,672.
This is, was not part of the original RFP, because it was additional damage that was found after they started, is that correct?
They were going to take, take the old railing and put that back up, but it wasn't usable.
Okay. Thank you.
Now I understand.
Yeah, I was like, what?
Actually, I thought it was, I thought it was a football game, and we were going to do defense.
This is a mock-up. The old railing was, had, was on the cantilever of the pad, the concrete, and there were a lot of attachment mechanisms there, so there was a lot of wear and tear on the thing. When we looked at, there were some options. This will be a lot more easily maintained, if there is repairs and everything involved.
No, we had to value it.
Forty inches in time, I was guessing. This is all mock-ups. I thought about that.
I like the--
Good looking, I like the rail.
Yeah, and I like the enclosure at the bottom for kids' safety.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Call for the motion, all those in favor. I'm sorry. You have the second one.
I have three more.
Why don't I have an other?
There's four dots on there.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Sorry, sorry, Ms. Nichols.
All right, the next item is also change order number one to a different contract, Contract A 22-16. The Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to process change order number one in the amount of $260,000 for Contract A 22-16. That's the citywide milling and paving contract. This contract was awarded to Chesapeake Paving and Sealing in September of 2015 as a one-year contract. The city reserves the right to renew this contract for two one-year terms contingent upon mutual agreement. This change order in particular will provide for additional milling and paving work to streets as noted in the FY '16 budget. There are sufficient funds in the account that I noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted above, to Chesapeake Paving in the amount of $260,000.
Questions?
Are these, is this more for milling or patching, or is this continuing down on this, of streets that were to be done?
It's continuing down your list.
Shall I ask one of this, or should I just say?
It's in the CIP, right?
Well, my complete memory of all of those things is good, but that's fine, thank you. See, I knew I would have a good question in open session, I knew it. We still have a half hour. Help me out.
Quick, let me get through this quick.
Let's get through the next one.
The next item is a request for a declaration of surplus. Surplus. The City of Salisbury has acquired several properties via tax sale and/or donation. 220 Records Street, 114 Tillman Street, 141 Second Street, 806 North Division Street, 527 Wales Street, 524 East Isabella Street, and 709 West Isabella Street. Pursuant to Chapter 2.36 of the Salisbury, Maryland Code of Ordinances, city-owned real properties such as these must first be deemed surplus by the Director of Procurement, then make a recommendation to City Council as to the sale or disposition of such real property. If approved by Council, the Director of Procurement will invite proposals for development or prepare an advertisement for auction sale. There's also the option of listing the property with a Realtor, with the contingency noting these additional actions as well. Council will then have the final say as to the acceptance or rejection of offers received before anything is finalized. It's my understanding that the administration does not wish to retain these properties, and believes that their sale would encourage residential and economic development. Given this need to serve the best interest of the City of Salisbury, it's my recommendation that these properties are deemed surplus and to request Council's approval, approval to declare them surplus.
Questions?
Are these all lots?
No.
I don't believe so. I'm, maybe Mr. Stevenson or Julia could comment on maybe which ones are lots, and which one might have a building on them.
Can you go through the list for me again, please?
Sure, here, I can give it to you here.
220 Records is a lot, 114 Tillman is a lot. 220 Records is a lot, 114 Tillman is a lot, 141 Second Street is a lot, 806 North Division is a lot, 527 Wales has been demolished, it should be a lot now, 524 East Isabella has now been demolished, and 709 West Isabella. Yeah, these are all down.
Okay, so these are all lots. Are these, are we considering donating, or we check with, have a patent, or with SNHS in terms of whether or not they want them?
We'll be getting there, and, you know, how we package and market them, you know, in line with the same purposes that we've talked about through the neighborhood improvement program is, next step, we wanted to get through this step first, you know, surplusing each property that, you know, we acquired whether through receivership or whether through some other program, but those two partners will certainly be at the top of our list, obviously, when we start to think about the disposition.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, the last item this evening is also a declaration of surplus. On January 22nd, 2016, the Procurement Office received a proposal from Salisbury Development Group, LLC, in response to the above-named solicitation, that was RFP 09-16, disposition and development of the Port of Salisbury Marina. February 1st, 2016, the city council approved an exclusive negotiating period with a vendor, and since then, there have been several meetings to discuss the proposed development and sale or lease terms. At this time, the mayor and administration feel confident about the progress of the discussions and have requested that this property be deemed surplus by the Director of Procurement and then formally declared surplus by the city council. Assuming that the disposition of the marina to a private entity for the purpose of economic development is in the best interest of the City of Salisbury, the Procurement Department requests that the Port of Salisbury Marina, as referenced in the RFP document, is deemed surplus, and also requests council's approval to declare the property a surplus.
Questions?
Yeah, are there a reversion clause in this anywhere, if they don't do anything with it, or we're just turning the property over and hope they do?
We haven't...
We had that discussion last week.
Okay, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
This is not a, it wasn't, it wasn't last week, it was like a month ago.
Okay, I didn't know if there was an update last week.
No, 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 but we're not there yet. This is purely the surplusing action, so we're not selling the land, we'll bring a land disposition contract at the end of the process if we get there with the developer, like with Lot 1, Lot 11, and Lot 30. So, we're not, we're not there yet, but yes, there will be a reversion clause.
So what happens if we surplus it and we don't get a buyer, then we have to reclaim it, I mean, cancel, just it's surplus, because I know we've had this issue with parking lots.
We've held on to our surplus parking lots for decades.
Yeah, I know, but I mean...
Surplusing doesn't do anything.
And it gets confusing about who had, you know, whether we have surplused it or haven't. There's some questions before, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2374.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2016 Fire Department budget transfer insurance proceeds received by the city to the fire department operating budget from the general fund for revenue received for repairs performed on Engine 16-1, whereas damage was done to Engine 16-1 while performing legitimate City of Salisbury Fire Department duties, and whereas the fire department has paid for the repairs to Engine 16-1 out of the 2016 Fire Department budget, and whereas the city has received a total of $7,206, $206 from insurance proceeds for repairs to the Engine 16-1, and whereas the insurance proceeds are to be used to replenish the fire department budget accounts and to bring them back in line with planned FY 2016 budget expense projections for the remainder of the year, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2016 budget is hereby amended as follows with an increase in the general fund revenue insurance proceeds account 01000456935 by $7,200, and increase in the fire department expense vehicle account 24035-534308 by an equivalent amount.
If not, I'll call for the motion to approve ordinance number 2374 for the second reading. All those...
You've called the question, then.
Calling the question.
Call a question?
You already have a question.
I've already got the motion, sorry. Yes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2375.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2375. Mr. Tillman.
This, thank you. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2016 Fire Department budget transfer funds from the city to the fire department operating budget from the general fund, whereas during the FY 2016 budget process, the fire department's budget and amount for vehicles account 24035-534308 was reduced by 20,000, and whereas the fire department has the need to maintain its fleet by performing regular maintenance and repairs, and whereas the fire department has reviewed the expense records from the last five years, and whereas the average annual expense for vehicle repairs and maintenance has been $150,493.86, and whereas to keep vehicles in service, the fire department is projecting a shortfall of funds in the vehicle account 24035-534308 for the remainder of the 2016, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2016 budget is hereby amended as follows with an increase general fund revenue account by $51,000, and an increase in the fire department expense account 24035-534308 by an equivalent amount.
Questions? I'll call the motion, all those in favor, ordinance 2375, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2376.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
An ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 budget to appropriate funds for traffic equipment repairs and maintenance, whereas a result of a traffic accident, City of Salisbury owned traffic signal was damaged at East Main Street and North Division Street, and whereas the City of Salisbury Traffic Division and Public Works Department made the necessary repairs to the traffic signal, and whereas the insurance agency for the individual responsible for the accident is reimbursing the city for actual expenses, and whereas the Traffic Division budget should be increased to accommodate these efforts, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2016 budget and Traffic Division equipment budget be hereby amended as follows with an increase in the miscellaneous revenue 01000-456911 account by $3,486.8, and an increase in the traffic equipment account 22000-534302 budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions? If not, I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2376, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2377.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second, Mr. Tillman.
An ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment to the schedule of maximum towing and storage fees, whereas Chapter 5-64 Towing Companies has been adopted by the mayor and city council, and whereas Chapter 5.64 calls for the fees and charges for the police-directed tows and the related storage of towed vehicles to be established by ordinance from time to time, and whereas the city has determined that the tow fees should not solely be influenced by the Motor Fuel Price Index as published by the U.S. Department of Labor as stated in ordinance number 2189 when said fees were last established, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the schedule of maximum towing fees and storage fees be modified as follows. One, the fee for accident vehicle tow is hereby amended from $160 to $200. Paragraph two, the automatic annual fee adjustment is hereby deleted from the schedule of fees last amended by ordinance number 2189.
Questions? Call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2377, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2378.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Tillman.
Mr. President, this is, the first one, 2378, is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 15-24-1620 Determination of Functional Family of the Salisbury Code to amend the requirements of functional family, whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review and evaluation and amendment, and whereas Chapter 15 dash, excuse me, .24.1620 entitled Determination of Functional Family of the Salisbury City Code currently does not give consideration to disabled individuals, and whereas the Fair Housing Act directs that reasonable accommodations be made with regard to housing needs of individuals with disabilities, and whereas by correcting the subsection, the city will better, will be better aligned with the Federal Fair Housing Standards Act, the American with Disabilities Act, and the Maryland state law, now therefore be it an act and ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, that Section 15.24.1620 of the Salisbury City Code be amended as follows, and that is Article 29, Section 15.24.1620 Determination of Functional Family, Paragraph 1, upon application of a group of not more than four persons, the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance shall make a determination of whether a functional family exists. Each of the following criteria shall be met. Share a permanent personal bond and commitment to one another, not dependent upon or supported by someone who has not maintained legal domicile at the particular unit and reside therein, not including any alimony or child support payments made to or for the benefit of any members of the group. C, maintain legal domicile at the particular dwelling unit. D, share a single household budget. E, share in the repair and maintenance of the dwelling unit and its grounds if any. F, prepare and eat meals together on a regular basis. G, share in legal ownership or tenancy of the dwelling unit as evidenced on a deed or lease. Paragraph two, which is an addition, in the case of an application by persons who are disabled pursuant to the terms of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance shall make a determination of whether a functional family exists under 15.24.1620, par. 1 and par. n. When making that determination, Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance shall make any necessary and reasonable accommodations, including the modification of conditions required by subsection one of this section and the allowance of more than four unrelated individuals in the same household when necessary to comply with the applicable federal and state laws regarding fair housing in persons with disabilities.
Questions? I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2378, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2379.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You got it.
This is a companion piece, this is the section that has gone, already been approved with regard to planning and zoning, and the, what we just defined earlier was the process that you would have to go through in order to achieve the status of functional family. What this does under paragraph number two is adds that such a group would be permitted, and that would be paragraph number two, a group of four or more disabled persons as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, who are approved by the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance pursuant to Section 15.24.16202 that we just previously approved.
Questions? I'll call the motion, all those in favor of ordinance number 2379, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, any comments? Ms. Nichols, do we have any public comments?
No, we don't. Oh, you'll just need to sign it, you can do it after, as long as we have your info. Uh huh, sure. Yes, thank you.
So, is that all the time?
Yes, just come on.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, my name's Carl Gollivin. I don't live in Salisbury, I live in Alexandria, Virginia, but since childhood, I've traveled through Salisbury hundreds and hundreds of times, and it's always been a pleasant experience until last fall, I received in the mail from Hagerstown, Maryland, a notice that I owed the City of Salisbury money for what some would say is a criminal traffic act of driving 37 miles an hour on your East Main Street, which is supposedly a school zone, and it actually undermines a sense of historical enjoyment in driving through your community. When I first came here this morning, I came to your city offices here and seeking Mr. Stevenson to try to get documentation of when that section of Main Street was authored, declared officially to be a school zone, and also documentation of whether you're in compliance with Maryland Title or Section 21, Subsection 809 regarding proper signage of that street as a school zone for photo enforcement purposes. I was told to contact the city attorney, Mr. Tillman, and actually I've since obtained subpoenas for Mr. Stevenson and Police Chief Duncan and Mr. Sterling concerning that information for use in court, the circuit court here on Thursday morning at nine o'clock. I'm probably the first person who's elevated a speed or a ticket camera ticket to circuit court, but if you'll, I would ask if just you yourselves would investigate whether you're in compliance with the state or the federal manual on uniform traffic control devices regarding how signage is placed on that street declaring it a, a school zone, because for people who don't live in Salisbury, who might even be visiting from out of state, there's a very good reason that there's even a federal manual that explains what the size and dimensions and placement of speed signs should be, and if there is photo enforcement in a school zone, how that should be signed, because I don't believe your signage is in compliance. In particular, I also would note that if a person is driving into town on Route 50 and then goes south on Davis and turns left on East Main Street, the only speed limit sign they will have passed is a 35 mile an hour sign. There is no 25 mile an hour regulatory sign on that period from that point east at that intersection, so I would ask that you please actually arrange to provide that information at nine o'clock on Thursday morning and just to investigate it for your own purposes, because I don't think it serves the City of Salisbury well to create, well, a sense of bad feelings from those who might be passing through and think that they're driving what would be a normal speed in a, what seems to be a business district, actually that block, and it's, I don't think it's, it's beneficial, for example, when I mentioned this to the mayor at the beginning of this meeting, he said, well, you know, you can avoid that by just slowing down. I would say that the, the City of Salisbury could avoid being accused of racketeering if it would properly sign its school zone. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll hold my comments. Any other business? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.